I'm calling this meeting to order. This is the Committee of the Whole Public Safety and Human Services Committee, held on Tuesday, February 20th, commencing at 4:33 PM. The council members in attendance are Councilmember Noiva Camina, Council President Kritzser, Council Vice President Forsythe, Councilmember Fields, Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Anderson is online, and myself, Councilmember Salahuddin as the presiding officer. There are two items on the agenda. The first item is the Public Safety Plan for Arrival of Light Rail with Police Chief Darryl Lowe.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much. So, as we know, Sound Transit has announced an April 27 start date for operation of the rail here into Redmond. We have been in talks with Sound Transit probably for about two years now in regards to what the staffing model will or may look like around the transit station. Most recently, they had a, I'll call it, a change in direction in the sense of, initially we were talking about FTEs or hiring staff for that particular purpose. Like I said, they recently came back to us and they asked us to provide them a costing model based on hours of service, not full-time staffing. So, we retooled and we will be providing them with that requested model as far as hours of service around their light rail operations, which for our Redmond Technology Station will be from 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So, what we'll be providing would be two officers for up to 10 hours a day, seven days a week upon the start of operations, and then reevaluate it within the first 90 days to see what the actual impact is. Given that it's just the extension portion coming from South Bellevue, it's not anticipated that there's going to be significant volume on the weekends, but we don't know that starting out, so we'll use that 90-day period to evaluate and then retool from there. As additional stations come online, then the hours provided will likely increase as the volume of ridership increases and/or we start to see or get a true understanding of what the impact is, you know, to Redmond as far as call volume, calls for service, and the like. From a training perspective, our staff has started this month to go through rail familiarization training, and then that will require all commission staff to go through the Sound Transit training program so that they understand, I'll call it, the intricacies of the train cars, how they're powered and those different types of things, and to get the opportunity to see, touch, and feel cars, cars at stations, et cetera, so we know what that looks like and how we're going to actually provide service to them. And then lastly, in preparation for this, we've created a transit district or patrol district, which is essentially a fancy way of saying, we created a geofence around the station so we can better track what the actual impact is on our calls for service and on the city. So, we'll be able to have specific data related to light rail operations, calls for service, and the like, and we'll be able to distinguish that from other calls for service and other impacts within the city. And with that, I'm glad to answer your questions.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for Chief Lowe? Council Vice President Forsythe?
Thank you. Thanks for pointing out that you're going to be collecting data so that we have good metrics to pull from moving forward and figuring out what safety, public safety around light rail looks like. I know a while ago, a lot of us were asking for what the plan was, and you and I had had conversations about community folks being out at the stations, helping direct people. Is that plan still in progress? Are there any updates on that?
So, it's like most plans, it's fluid. So, Sound Transit's security profile, I'll call it, is a three-layered approach. They have three different layers of security in and around their rail systems and operations. So, the way they are approaching it is they will handle the vast majority of incidents or events that occur related to rail operations and the rail property. They will only call the police when there's a need for, I'll say, you know, police intervention. So, their model is trying to be, you know, self-sufficient. So, from our perspective, there can and will be a conversation around public safety officers or community ambassadors or that kind of alternative response as we move forward, you know, in the budget process and talking about, you know, staffing for the police department moving forward. So, this particular model does not incorporate that or encompass that. This would simply be what we would be charging Sound Transit for police-related calls for service related to the rail.
So, the community ambassador program won't necessarily be stood up with the link extension on the east side before the rest of the stations open? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. So, the likelihood of the community ambassador or an alternative response, that realistically is going to be, I'll call it, a year out or further down the road because the impact of the extension is not likely to be impactful, right? As it starts up, yes, we will see, you know, some parts and pieces, but then as the other stations come onboard, we'll see additional impact. But, in my opinion, we won't know the true, I'll call it, implication or impact until we get connected, you know, across the lake and we see, you know, what that looks like, you know, in its entirety.
We can expect to see the community ambassadors as part of the budget conversations late in the fall, as well as whatever staffing arrangements you're hoping to make for the replacement of the Sound Transit money?
Yes. So, my staffing proposal as part of the budget conversation will include an option for alternative response or community ambassadors in addition to commission police staff.
Thanks.
So, I've got three hands. I'll go Councilmember Noiva Camina, Councilmember Fields, and then Councilmember Stewart.
Hi, Chief. Thanks for the update. I'm really looking forward to both the community being able to go back and forth, as well as myself personally. I saw some numbers looking like ridership, looking Monday through Friday, about 6,000, and seeing that decline over the weekend. Is that still, and I know that we don't, we can't know for certain, but are those about the numbers that we're still expecting?
Yes. If whatever estimates that Sound Transit has based upon their data, I will say that, yes, I would be comfortable with that being what we can expect. And, as I said, with this particular model, we know that the weekend impact will be a lot less, and that's why we're going to evaluate it after 90 days to see if we need to continue with that level of service over the weekend, or if we have a larger operational window Monday through Friday, and then I'll call it almost like an on-call or as-needed piece on the weekend if there's truly not, you know, the volume.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
You've said the word "impact" maybe 15 times. Can we talk about what that means? I mean, what kind of impacts are you expecting to evaluate? What would that mean in terms of how your data is collected and how we would actually respond within that, or shortly after that 90-day period that you're talking about?
So, I would anticipate the initial impact as to now have, I'll say, a need for police services or calls for service that we didn't have prior. So, the true impact is unknown, but going from zero to something is going to be an impact. However, from that data perspective, you can't really multiply by zero, so that first year is kind of anecdotal at best. The second year will give us a better feel for what that looks like, and then realistically, it'll be the third year that we'll actually have what I'll call an anchor point to be able to say, based on light rail operation, we've seen a blank percent, you know, increase in calls for service or that type of impact. And that's why we created that transit district, so we could be very intentional and specific about the data we're pulling and not just look at the, not just look at it from the perspective of, in this particular district, which is overlake, which is where the stations are, not looking at overlake as a whole, because that would give us, if you want to call it, a false sense of impact, whereas by having this district, it minimizes it to an area specifically around, you know, the train station. And then that gives us both better information to make decisions internally, but also to be able to have different conversations with Sound Transit as it relates to the services provided or the need for, you know, additional staffing resources based upon that impact.
Councilmember Stewart, and then Councilmember Anderson.
Thanks, Chief. So, the ILA with Sound Transit, today this is an informational on an ILA yet to come. Are we going to be seeing that in the next month or so?
That's very optimistic.
Before you begin, I guess I would refine that to say, before you begin providing hours of service to Sound Transit on this?
Not likely. Their process is a bit more cumbersome, so once we act to get a draft of a contract and come to agreement in principle, it then has to get agendized and go to their particular board. So, we will likely be providing service for a couple to several months before, I'll say, the ink is dry and we actually have that contract in place. So, I would anticipate that ILA coming back before this body within the next two months.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess one thing to just clarify, because you were speaking about Sound Transit's three-tier security process or their organization itself. That's not what the ILA is. The ILA is specifically for when the City of Redmond's Police Department is called in for police calls, and the, basically, how that will be funded by Sound, reimbursed by Sound Transit. That's what the ILA will cover, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I misspoke. It'll be Council President Kritzser next, and then Councilmember Anderson.
I'm happy if Councilmember Anderson wants to go first. I was just raising my hand. Okay, great. Well, just a quick question on this. So, just to clarify with these two officers, they will be essentially kind of on-call as needed, but not necessarily walking around the stations? Or can you describe what the vision is for those two positions?
So, it will be two officers specifically assigned to the transit district so that they would be responsible for patrolling the actual stations themselves, responding to calls for service, and then when not, I'll say, actively involved with Sound Transit to be, I'll say, visible in the overlake area, but primarily, you know, between the two stations. So, as far as, yes, they will see a Redmond police officer physically at the stations, but they will also see, you know, the two layers that Sound Transit has for on-ground and onsite security at the stations. So, part of their three-layer process is they have a mobile presence that traverses between their stations, and then they have two layers or two levels of security physically present at the stations themselves.
And so, in order for the officers to get involved after those different kind of parts of their process, they would have to make a call to the officers, or if the officers were on-site, they might also take action?
I'll say yes, Ann. So, if the officer is there and they, in police terms, on view or see something, they can engage, but the working understanding or the working premise is, Sound Transit will try and be self-sufficient and deal with their problems and their issues with their staff, and only if it's beyond that or if it's a criminal matter will they then call us to come in and assist or address the problem. But again, that would not preclude us from engaging in something if the officer was there and saw a need to engage or interact.
And sorry, one last clarifying question on this. On their safety and security staff that they have, do we have any sort of oversight or jurisdiction or input into how they approach their work or ability to kind of oversee in terms of?
None at all.
Okay. I assume not, but just curious whether there was any sort of discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I appreciate the conversation, and also just was curious if you could talk a little bit more about the geocaching you mentioned, if that's going to be novel for our department or if that's consistent throughout the other Sound Transit stations and properties? Just something to look forward to, or?
Honestly, I'm not sure how other cities that are onboarding are going to do that. I know I do have a meeting coming up with the Bellevue chief, and we'll talk about collaboration since that's the other part of the extension and we're right next door, but I'm not sure if they have created a similar, you know, transit district or geofence in order to be able to isolate and capture that data, but I would definitely suggest it to him.
Fantastic. Thank you. I'm glad to hear we're ahead of the game.
And I have one question, and then I'll open it up to more questions from the council. My question was around the light rail train familiarization training, and the first question is, is that brought to us by Sound Transit? And then the second question is, do you have sort of a more detailed overview of what that training will encompass? And if not here, if we could get a copy of that later on as well?
Yes, it is being provided by Sound Transit, and I will get you the information. I haven't, my training day hasn't come up as of yet, but I too will be attending the familiarization training.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Council President Kritzser?
Just one comment to get directly at what some of my questions were asking about, too. I appreciate the information that you're going to do also on the geocaching and gathering the data, and I would just say that I think one of the pieces that are at the heart of this, and I think what Council Vice President Forsythe was asking about in terms of the community ambassadors, and part of our discussion about reimagining public safety, is that I think we will want to look at the data, and I think we should go in not necessarily only making assumptions that the light rail is going to bring more crime or more problems. As you said, it's going from zero to something, so it is, it's great to be able to have these plans, but I think it's also good for us to be able to look at the data as it goes out and to think about, hopefully, how we build our alternative response programs so that, you know, we can make sure that when people step off the light rail, everyone feels like it's a welcoming city and appreciate our police in participating in that.
Yeah, absolutely. Like I said, you know, as this comes online and becomes more normalized, you know, we will have to make adjustments accordingly. And I've said all along, this is not, you know, the crime train, it's not the, you know, zombie apocalypse. You know, all of these, you know, these concerns, I'll say, are, you know, legitimate to a degree, but that's not the, you know, that's not the reality. I say that's not my experience with light rail, you know, operationalizing or coming back, you know, to the municipality. And it'll be like many other things, it'll be incumbent upon our relationship, both, you know, with Bellevue and with Sound Transit, you know, to ensure that, you know, people that, you know, utilize a train are, I'll say, are good citizens and that we have the appropriate things in place so that these behaviors or problems get dealt with before, you know, they get here to Redmond. That's going to be, you know, a key part of it, and that's where, again, the partnership with, you know, Sound Transit comes in because it's ultimately, I'll say, 80/20, you know, 80% their responsibility, 20% ours because it comes here to the city, and that's kind of the approach that, you know, I've taken with it. We've had, you know, very good and candid conversations, you know, with my counterparts about, you know, expectations and different things, but until it becomes operational, we just don't know. So, once it becomes operational, either, you know, it is consistent with our conversations or additional conversations are had about what our expectations are about that partnership and their obligation and responsibility not to have a negative or detrimental impact, you know, on Redmond or any of the other communities that, you know, the train goes through before it gets here.
Any other questions? Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, just a clarification of what I was asking earlier about impacts. I'm of the mind that you always find what you're looking for, and therefore you've got to be careful about what you're looking for. I always remember the storyline in Jurassic Park when they were looking for reduced dinosaurs, and they were surprised because they weren't looking for increased, or increased amount of dinosaurs. So, I guess the point is, I think we need to have a little bit of imagination about this evaluation period. You know, will there be more interjurisdictional work because people are committing crimes in Bellevue and running off to Redmond or vice versa? Will there be more lost children? I mean, I don't know the kinds of things that light rail would impact, but I hope that we don't have a very defined definition of what we mean by impact. I think we need to keep our minds open, so, thank you.
Sure. Any last questions? Great. Thank you, Chief Lowe. Our next item will be the Public Safety and Human Services Committee Work Plan, and I believe we have Director Helen.
I may not be able to answer all of your issues, but I'm here to have a conversation. Carol Helen, playing a Community Development Director, but also representing through the work program that you see in your packet materials, the contributions from both the police department and from fire. So, if there are comments on the work program or questions, I'm happy to answer them with respect to items that are being presented to you from the human services perspective. Chief Lowe is also here and can also come to the table if there are questions about fire or police. Sorry about that.
Great. Thank you so much, Director Helen. I will open it up to any questions. This information was shared earlier. The work plan has all of the quarters throughout the year and information across different areas, so any questions across? Councilmember Anderson?
This question is for you, Presiding Officer Salahuddin. I'm curious what you're most looking forward to.
That is a great question. I won't say either police or fire because then I'll get in trouble on either side. I am really looking forward to the opportunity to, you know, explore how each of these items will fit into the budget. Budgeting is not something that I've done in my experience before, and I really want to look at the opportunities that we have as, you know, as a council and specifically within this committee to have the conversations around what areas we'll need to invest in for the future of Redmond, for Redmond 2050. Some particular opportunities that I'm looking forward to talking about are what I asked Director Helen to, you know, put this on our agenda for is the permanent supportive housing updates and making sure that we're receiving regular updates from Redmond City staff, as well as from Plymouth Housing to ensure that, you know, our project plan that we have moving forward is to the standard not only of council, Redmond City staff, but of the community, and we want to make sure that we're having those discussions at a regular cadence. Yes, Director Helen?
I just want to make a follow-up comment that this was a, this was a great opportunity for us to add something that the council requested when we were having the conversation about the Plymouth project, but permanent supportive housing, as it's depicted here in this quarterly work program, also refers to the updates that are required as a result of the Health Through Housing Operational Agreement. So, as you probably recall, when we adopted the operational agreement back in December, we did require that there be, within six months of starting of operations, that there start being report-outs to the council on certain data points. So, that will likely be something that will be incorporated into any operational agreement with Plymouth Housing. But then, as we march towards the opening of those projects, it sounded to me like the council had a request for more information sharing and opportunity to ask questions as those projects were coming online. So, we anticipate that the Health Through Housing project in Overlake is likely to come online in around the April timeframe, and then Plymouth Housing is obviously working on their due diligence during this period of time and will likely not be breaking ground until at least Q1 of next year. So, there are other types of interactions that we'll keep council apprised of, including the development of the community advisory group and design changes for the, for the project to be accommodated at the Cleveland Street location.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much for that, Director Helen, and for the question, Councilmember Salahuddin. When I looked at the work plan and then hearing the conversation earlier today, I think there's a real, this doesn't fit in the page, I'm not asking for an addition to the work plan, but a reflection, rather, would be, you know, there's a real interest in continuing and coming back to the conversation about reimagining public safety in our city, and we know that in the last budget, the council didn't yet get to a solution on funding public safety in our city, however that looks. So, there's a lot of work to be done, and this is certainly a priority of mine in the coming year. So, I see on here for public safety some of the annual tasks that council needs to take care of throughout a year, and I'm really looking forward to the generative conversation on these two topics. What is it and how to fund it? And hopefully, having some of that work have a chance to be done prior to the budget process because it's such a big bucket. That won't all happen in this committee alone, but it's certainly something that we should probably have baked prior to starting the rest of the budget conversations because it is so big. So, just a reflection, and thanks for bringing this forward.
Absolutely. Council President Kritzser?
I would add to that. I do think it would be helpful, in here on this work plan, we have the community health update showing up. I do hear a lot of questions from the community about how we're going to follow up on specifically the alternative crisis response piece of that, which I know is kind of within that Thrive community health approach. I think it would be helpful just so the public can kind of see, to be able to have that called out, and in particular, from my perspective, to make sure that we have on the agenda regularly updates on how that is progressing. I know we have a big slate of work on that to do. In addition to, I would say, I'd separate that out as a separate item from having ongoing conversations on how we are going to fund all our public safety needs we didn't meet in the lobby.
Right. So, if I may, and in response to Councilmember Stewart, I wasn't thinking the kind of alternative public safety approaches were actually a subset of the community health update. Really, that community health update, if you notice, in quarter one, we planned to do a Thrive end-of-year update from 2023, which is anticipated to kind of round out the information that we have historically provided to you with respect to kind of those Thrive elements, but that we would then transition in the quarter-two timeframe to community health updates. So, in that March-April timeframe, we'll talk to you about our hiring of the positions that were approved by council and then trying to create, kind of move from that Thrive dashboard to a dashboard that you would like to see. And Councilmember Salahuddin and I did specifically talk about, for instance, the Racer letter and how we, that group is exploring a range of options for alternative response beyond just Racer, and that that community health update would be the place where we would have those conversations.
Great. I think that's great, and I would say, as that work progresses, we might want to just split it out to make sure that we do get the follow-up because I think we'll have what happens with either Racer or something else, and then the developing, like what does that look like for Redmond? And I think we just, it'd be great to be able to use committee time to check in on where we added, be able to hear from the staff that are actively working behind the scenes, just as a reflection from last year where I think there was a lot of work going on behind the scenes, but until we had that big study session, we didn't really see it and the public didn't see that that was all going on. And so, I would just suggest that we have some more frequent touchpoints in this committee for the community to be able to be brought along on what those conversations are progressing like, if others agree.
Thank you. Council Vice President Forsythe?
Just raising my hand to say, yes, I agree. I think that adding a section where we actually get to discuss the policy around that topic is something that we haven't really discussed too terribly much. We all kind of know where we stand, but having an open, honest dialogue about policy direction in particular is something that I see as a gap that we need to fill.
Councilmember Fields?
This is probably a bit naive. So, when we talk about public safety, we're talking about, actually, when we talk about almost anything, but we're talking about public safety. We're talking about actual changes to the safety as you can measure it. We're also talking about the way people, their impressions and their feelings and what they believe is the cause of public safety. I wasn't here last week. Did read some of the, did watch the video, I did see the people in the crowd, and there's an underlying... And there's an underlying segment of our population that believes that public safety is being threatened by the things that we do. I've talked with people in the community, I've actually talked with Council Vice President Forsyth a bit about this, but, and I also talked with someone who used to work at the city prior to the Marcioni-Burney years. And they had something called a listening session, where they actually went out and really listened to the people who live here. There weren't any nonprofits, there weren't any of the more formal organizations part of that, because they all have a specific interest or a specific cause that they're trying to accomplish. So is something where we actually, before we start the policy discussions, is there something that we can do to get a better understanding of what our community actually thinks and feels and fears and hopes for? Is there some sort of those kinds of sessions that we can either talk about this year and do next year? Is that something that we can do?
So I may not know all of the types of things where we collect information about public safety and how people feel, but we do community surveys. You're all out in the public, and that's an opportunity for you to share what you're hearing. To the extent that you hold some form of listening session, I believe the council has, over time, had on their work program an interest, maybe not rising to the highest level, but in going out into the community and having kind of a different format. I know you did that before the pandemic, where you would go to various different neighborhoods and hold those types of listening sessions. But we could certainly collect all the various different information points that we have about public safety, there are many of them, and kind of collate those into a place that is accessible to you easily, if that would be helpful.
I'm thinking in terms of a more direct, I understand the complications and the logistics to organize it, but part of the listening is the opportunity to be heard. And for you to provide us all of these different elements that you've collected is not the same as residents and people who are coming to city council and expressing a fairly large fear and borderline contempt for us as council and elected officials and staff. What I'm trying to do is offer the council and you an opportunity to think about, is there something more that we can do to actually engage with our public? I know that I've read accounts where other cities do it, they feel successful about what they've done. I'm happy to talk with you offline about what that would mean. But in all frankness, your response to me kind of seemed to say, we don't need to do that.
Please don't misunderstand what I said. There are, you ask for both kind of information that is available, and whether the council, if there were new opportunities, you're kind of asking outside my realm of responsibility and probably knowledge at that point. That's why I'm not giving you a complete answer about all the different information sources that are available. We could ask someone to collate those for your benefit. With regard to the other option on listening sessions, I know that has been a topic of conversation. I have not been involved in those conversations. It has been one that has been discussed, I know, with comms and others. I think that ball is in your court, that is just, this was all I was saying.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your comment, Councilmember Fields. And I would, as chair of this committee, I would love to, you know, talk with the council, and I'll pass it off to Council Vice President Forsyth to talk more about this, maybe, but having listening sessions, I would love to take a lead on that from this committee, just to listen to public safety sentiment around the community. Council Vice President?
I feel like Council President and I may have been on the same page here of what to say, and if I miss anything, please jump in. But we are definitely working with the new communications staff to figure out what our going out into the community will look like moving forward, and this is an excellent topic, that we can create potentially a listening session. So I would say that let council leadership explore that and see if that's something we can do in the next couple of months, to make sure that we have one of those active, engaging listening sessions with our communication staff, and give us a chance to potentially plan that.
Council President?
I'd also add that this weekend at our council retreat, one of the discussion topics that we've talked about having is, you know, what does it look like for council to set goals for how we engage our community? It's been a topic that was raised at our last retreat about even, do we even take our council meetings and have them out in the middle of downtown park? Councilmember Stewart's idea, or, you know, are there other things we could do to make council more accessible? And I think this feeds into some of that broader conversation. That would be great for us to set some goals and some specific things on, and this kind of feeds into that. The other piece that I would say that I think this brings up, that I've heard from community members as well, is actually, I think tied to the work on DEI, where I think very far back initially, when we started to talk about our DEI plan that we're still working on, we had talked about potentially having that include a scope of having a community advisory board. I know that other cities like Issaquah, for example, have created an equity advisory board, or a DEI-focused, kind of similar to some of our other commissions, to be able to look at different issues. And it's a group that could also cover, from a diversity of perspectives in our community, be able to look at topics like our approach to alternative crisis response or community health, amongst other topics. So I guess I would put that out there under the DEI. As we, I'm still being patient and waiting for that plan, which I would say would also be nice if, once we get some detail of when we're going to actually see the plan, I think it's going to be quarter-two, quarter-three, to have a little bit more, once we get more information, to have that under the DEI bucket to follow up on.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Thanks so much. A lot of my thoughts have been shared here, but I will just reflect back my enthusiasm for this topic and this idea. And as we go into the council retreat this weekend, council's been prompted to come with a few of their priorities, of our priorities, moving forward in the next couple of years. I'll certainly put this one back on my list again this year. Like I said before, I think that proactively going out and making sure folks know how to contact their government, be engaged in their government outside, getting government outside of this building, can make it so much more friendly. And then we also have the other opportunities throughout the year that are so important. In the last couple of weeks, couple of months, rather, I would say, some of my favorite calls have started with, "I met you at Derby Days, at that booth, and you seemed, you seemed nice, so can I ask you a question?", right? So those are all important things that we take on as well. So I appreciate the responsive listening to the issues of the moment, and seek to be proactive about it as well, so that we can continue to have more proactive engagement and a chance for folks to be heard. So thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Noiva Kamina?
Thank you. More of a comment rather than a question, and that's, we've been hearing about public safety from one perspective, and being one to bring a different voice to the table. One that we haven't heard too much of, and usually because it's inside of guilt or shame when we talk about finances, is those that are now being vilified for being low income. And the way that some of our residents are now feeling as a result of comments being made about what levels of crime, including mostly violent crime, comes with being simply low income. Coming from poverty myself, and having that bias, there's been several residents where they share this with me, and they say, you know, we, thank you for having these conversations, and we know that that's not accurate. So just keeping in mind that we are hearing a very loud voice, and that it's not the voice of all of our residents.
Appreciate that perspective. Councilmember Noiva Kamina? Any other questions? Councilmember Stewart?
I did have one for Director Helen, actually. Director Helen, I just wanted to check in on the human services grants. This is always, you know, a big topic of conversation. This will be our first time since the start and conclusion of pandemic-era subsidy that we'll be going through that process. So we have them in this order. We, in Q3, will hear the human services grant funding recommendations, and then an update on the human services strategic plan in the fourth quarter. I just want to check in, is that the right order of events for us?
Yes. So we already have a human services strategic plan now. You didn't approve it very long ago, and so that is going to carry us into this year and this budget cycle. What we are trying to do is very closely sync the human services conversation on grant funding with the council budget. So previously, it had been a little bifurcated, which created some confusion. I know last year, or the last budget, when we had the council conversation, we came to you with the Human Services Commission grant funding recommendation, but it was outside the scope of the budget, and it was like, we still don't know if we have that money available to make, to meet the needs of that recommendation, or whether there might be more or less. We've charged the Human Services Commission to aim for the per capita rate as it's adjusted for inflation and population. And then if there were less available or more available, just like we would do with any other budget proposal, where we might need to essentially increase or decrease it, then we will have the benefit of their recommendation and what to do next when the human services funding conversation comes to you as part of budget balancing. And then that recommendation will be adopted together with the rest of the recommendations, or actually, the budget resolutions. I do remember that there are council members that, because of your nonprofit activities and things like that, that there may be conflicts associated with the boards, commissions you may sit on elsewhere, or your employment. So we will seek to ensure that, to the extent necessary, we split up those recommendations to allow you to recuse yourself appropriately and vote on the package.
Wonderful. I really appreciate that sequencing. Thank you so much.
Council President Kritzer?
Since it was raised, I will ask for the clarification. My understanding when we passed the strategic plan was that there would be a follow-up implementation plan, because I remember when that was passed, I had asked, I think in particular, one of the things that I continue to be interested in is whether we have the right level of staffing to support the human services needs in our community, which we basically got the gap in the needs assessment in the strategic plan and what we wanted to do, but not the details on kind of how do we, do we get there. So can you just clarify when or if we'll see that implementation plan?
So I'll have to get back to you with respect to timing on that piece. I think we have been, as staff, implementing the requirements or the objectives that were contained in the strategies that are contained in the human services strategic staff. So it may be a need for us to tell you what we're doing, like you said before, on those updates, so that can be something we can add to the, for instance, the community health updates and other updates that we do with respect to boards and commissions.
Thank you so much, and thanks for all your work.
Any other questions? Perfect. Thank you all so much for this discussion. And to circle back to Councilmember Anderson's question in the beginning, I'm really excited to, you know, work with this committee, work with the directors and the police and fire chief, and work with all of you to ensure that, you know, we have a safe and healthy community for everyone. We've now reached the end of today's agenda. Is there anything else for the good of the order? If not, we are adjourned.